All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. I called this meeting of the Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is August 12, 2025, and it's 7:12 PM. With the clerk called Rose, please.
Councilman O'Fay.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
Present.
Councilman Sedman.
Present.
Councilman Mahfud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes, present.
And Councilman Hassan is not present. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the participants. Hi, my name is Daniel. We'd like to welcome the citizens of America. We hope that we can assist, raise their hand, and thank God for this opportunity. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Yeah.
No? All right, move to proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. And we have the first one, 2025 Summer Youth Program.
Hi. CED has had a group of summer youth interns working with us in an apartment this summer. You all can come in and just stand here with Tameh at the front. And we want to thank them for their work and to have a short presentation to give to you about what they've been up to.
Thank you.
Hello and Assalamualaikum, everyone. I hope you all are doing well. Today, you will be hearing our intern program presentation. My name is Tameh, a rising junior at Wayne City University. I'm majoring in accounting and a minor in entrepreneurship and innovation. I serve as a youth intern supervisor for the summer beautification program, where I had the privilege of mentoring and supervising four amazing youth interns. Hamtramck always holds a special place in my heart. My journey with the city of Hamtramck began in high school as a general inspector. Thank you, Rana, for giving me that opportunity and opening the door for me that time, and continued in 2023 during my senior year, when I interned with HR, the accountant, city manager, and CED for over a year and a half. I would like to thank the CED department, Isabel, Mike, and Naima for their guidance and support from day one. And now, in 2025, I am grateful to once again contribute to our city's growth. Today, our interns, Nabihah, Nathan, Basma, and Raphael, and Eddy from DDE is going to present and will share an overview of the projects they were doing this summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sedman. Can you move it down?
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nabihah Chowdhury, and I- I'm sorry, Nabihah, is the mic on? Bring it down. Okay. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nabihah Chowdhury, and I'm a rising freshman at Hamtramck High School. One of the projects we beautification interns worked on every Friday, what they're permitting was the Every Neighbor Project with Max Gilgenas. Essentially, what we did is we went to our disabled and elderly neighbors' homes and cleaned up their porches, painted them, placed mulch in their flowerbeds, and plucked out unnecessary leaves. One of my favorite moments from this project was when one of my teammates didn't want to spray paint, and he was getting hesitant about it, but Max encouraged him to do so anyway. Eventually, he figured out that he liked it, and this proved to me that this was a place where I could try out new things and figure out if I liked them, if I'm good at them. And great programs like these deserve more community support, and you can help by volunteering. I believe it's every Saturday morning at Passenger Recovery near the Hamtramck Public Library. You can donate your yard supplies. You can let any disabled or elderly friends you have know about this program. And you can spread the word through social media or any form of communication you know how to use best. Thank you. And I'll be passing it on to my colleague, Basma.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Basma Jabril. I'm a rising sophomore at Michigan Great Lakes Virtual Academy. Today, I will be talking about Grow Hamtramck. Now, what is Grow Hamtramck, you may ask? Grow Hamtramck is a grant initiative with the goal to plant 1,000 trees in four years. The work wasn't always easy. We faced struggles such as reluctant residents and bad weather. But we continued to work tirelessly and give our all to grow the community and making Hamtramck greener. This was a great opportunity, and it was so much fun talking to residents and talking to residents and informing them about this initiative. And now, I will be passing it on to Nathan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nathan DeBois. I am a sophomore at Clarenceville High School. Today, I will be talking about the Young Leaders Professional Conference. On July 31st, we attended the Young Leaders Professional Conference. The conference was a learning experience for all of us. We got to learn about recognizing emergency situations, interview insights, how to save, invest, and manage our earnings, and how to maintain healthy relationships, and so much more. We also got a chance to explore the city of Detroit through a people mover. And that helped us learn our history on the city of Detroit. We left with a new perspective of Detroit. My next topic that I will be talking about is the anti-littering. Anti-littering was a collaborative project that we worked on with the GM student corps and the Park Conservancy to help the community. We collected the litter in Veterans Park and developed an asset of interview questions and about how people receive their information. With that information that we found out, we found out that people received their information by sermons, social media, and park voting events. That is the end of my sermon, and I will be taking it to Raphael.
Hello, audience. My name is Raphael Ortiz, or my nickname is Raffi. A lot of my friends will call me that. And that's what my team's been calling me these past few weeks. But what I'll be talking about is downtown trashcans and planters. So this is something, whether you're a resident of Hamtramck or just visiting the city, is something that's affected by all of us, right? So every time you might have to take out your trash out of your car, you throw it in the garbage can, right? But in Hamtramck, some of the liners were cracked or broken. So what we did is we walked around, assessed which liners we need replacing, and we make sure to get those replaced and ordered them, right? And also, we worked on the planters. We measured the planters as well to check out the measurements of those. So yeah, this is something that would affect everyone in the city, wherever we are. And then, one main thing that we worked on, something physically rewarding that you could actually see with your vivid eyes, is the mural project. So the mural project is something we came up with. The design was checkers. There's no necessarily meaning behind the checkers besides something that's very warm, welcoming, and exciting. Because on this street at Pope Park, we host the Night Bazaar, which is an event where we promote businesses. So that's basically all of our presentation, and I'll be passing it on to Eddy. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. My name is Eddie Echinhorn. I'm one of the DDA interns, so a separate internship from them. I am a recent graduate of Michigan State University. I'm also here representing my partner Sammy, who couldn't be here today. She is a rising sophomore at Harvard University. So we have worked in the Community and Economic Development Office, particularly on matters concerning the Downtown Development Authority, which is a group of business owners here who are concerned with the economic and community development of the businesses along Joseph Compo Avenue. So we've gotten to work with a ton of aspects of City Hall, from the police department to the Parks Conservatory. We've been running the Grow Hamtramck social medias, the Instagram. You might see videos of us or that we've made promoting different businesses. We've done some on different restaurants. We did stuff about the history. We helped the police department with an anti-littering PSA. So we have been helping to establish and maintain relationships between businesses on Joseph Compo and City Hall, namely, like I said, the members of the Downtown Development Authority. But I've walked up and down Joseph Compo countless times now, into a ton of businesses, talking to business owners, answering questions, receiving feedback, all that kind of thing. We've also worked very hard in collaboration with the development coordinator, Alessandro, who is helping Hamtramck's application to become a select-level Michigan Main Street community. We're currently at Engage Level. And Michigan Main Street is a service that is a nonprofit through the state that helps with technical assistance to businesses and business owners in Hamtramck or in a downtown. We're trying to get them to help us here in Hamtramck, give technical assistance and access to further grant money and that kind of thing to help promote and grow businesses in Hamtramck. So that's really exciting. We've been an Engage Level community for almost a year now, and we've seen significant growth, and so we're trying to take that next step. And we have also helped organize Hamtramck's monthly Night Bazaar, as Raffi just pointed out. Our last one was on Saturday, August 2nd. I know there were people there, the mayor was there. And we had 16 vendors from up-and-coming Hamtramck and nearby businesses selling things, food, and clothing, and paintings, and all of these kinds of things. It was a great, very, very successful time. We had, I think, around 500 visitors that night, and so it was really, really an awesome thing for the community. And we're doing that every month. The next one is September 6th, so I hope to see everybody there. And yeah, Sammy and I have had a wonderful time working together and working with the people here in City Hall. We've learned so much about how businesses operate, how City Hall operates, and that kind of administration and communication aspect of everything. So we've really, really enjoyed it. And this is a brochure we've made on Michigan Main Street for the businesses that we'll be passing out to businesses soon just to explain to them what kind of opportunity this would allow us and allow those businesses if we were to be accepted to become a Select Level community. So yeah. And I believe that's the end of the presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, I'd like to just give them their certificates and then have a picture taken. But we also have the GM students. They're going to be doing the same thing. So do you guys mind doing it two times so that each group of students, if they want to leave, can leave? Okay. Okay, first and foremost, Tahmir Mhamad Rahman. Thank you so much for your time. Mhamad Jabril. Sammy Samin. Oh, that's the person here. Raphael Ortiz, or can I call you Raffi?
Yeah. Thank you.
Nathan DeBois. Nabihah Chowdhury. And Edward Echinhorn. If you guys want to stand here, and the council will come and take photos with you for a minute. Is that okay?
Don't let anyone trip over the wire.
I keep an eye on them.
And then the council members will come around.
Oh, so go.
Yeah, you can just fill in, I guess.
Yeah, sure. Inner's first.
Perfect. Sedman, actually, oh, never mind. I thought you were the last. Yep, perfect. Three, two, one. Great. Thank you so much. I'll send it to you, Greg. I'll send you mine. So go ahead.
Yay, go to the middle.
Thank you so much.
Can we stay here for a moment? They have a presentation.
The next groups we have are the students around the funeral honor student corps, and they've also been doing work for the city this summer. And CED's been really appreciative of their assistance and some overlap with our interns, which has been great to have them collaborate. So happy to have you hear their presentation as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Wingo. I'm a rising senior at Hamtramck High School. I am going to be giving my presentation with-
So, I'm also a rising senior at Hamtramck High School. So in collaboration with Grow Hamtramck, we were planning and we helped grow 1,000 trees in Hamtramck. We helped by advertising. We went to 1,000 homes, and we got more than 200 tree signups. And-
So we have a very diverse community, as you know. And we know a lot of people don't have cellular devices or they don't know how to, or English isn't their first language. So we decided to make an article to put in the newspapers so hopefully it would reach more people in our community and make flyers. And if you see when you're walking around, have poster boards of those. Other than that, as you've seen, the Hamtramck beautification interns that were just here, we partnered with these people over the summer to go to one of our biggest parks and clean up as much as we can to spread awareness of what we're doing and just to help our community overall. And other than that, we had a Hamtramck Go Green Field Day, where we wanted to engage with more of our community as we were doing more background stuff of just cleaning and picking up trash and just helping out as much as we could. We decided to invite families to come have ice cream and have face painting and have a bunch of activities with families just to also spread awareness over planting trees over 1,000 trees over the next four years.
We also-
The-
We also, Wayne Metro, Wayne County, they discovered that high schoolers have below reading scores. So we wanted to help, and we built a lending library in Holbrook Park and so everyone can have access to books in different languages and free books. We also helped Wayne Metro. We helped them develop hygiene products. And we also donated 5K to French's House.
And that was matched by GM. And as much as we donated, which ended up being 5K, that was matched and given back to the organization. So basically, they didn't lose any money of what we shared, and they gave money instead. And also, for the new trees that are going to be planted around the community, we made tree tags to help protect them, just saying in different languages, like Arab, Bengali, and English, about what you can do to help the tree, what not to do to the tree, and how to protect it over the span of it growing in the future.
And basically, that is it. We really had fun this summer by helping and volunteering. This summer was a really good opportunity. We helped with GM, and honestly, the volunteering part just made us remember why we always want to volunteer and give out back to the community. And it was just a good opportunity. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a certificate for Christian Wingo. And for Saad Najeeb. I'm going to read off the rest of the names as well, but they are not- Oh, they are all here. Perfect. Guys can all come up here. Is it Shahriya? Shahriya Ahmad? Okay. Mustaqim Khalid? Also, Mohammed Radwan? Radwan, hold on. Radwan is the man.
You got it.
Thank you. Maria Shah? Ishraq Anan Kalakar? Khatana Bijan? Deja Parker is not here? Oh, Deja. Thank you so much. Do you want to give it to the council members and mayor, please? That's good. Perfect. Okay, hold on. Wait for Greg. Greg needs one. Thank you, Greg.
All right, so we move to the addition and substitutions. Do we have a pity?
Can we ask for a quiet in the audience, please? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add, a new business. Discussion about Joseph Compo project in alleys. And then also, I want to add to a closed session.
One at a time, please. I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, the first one was what?
Under new business.
Yeah, discussion of-
Joseph Compo project in alleys.
So that would be-
H. No. Hold on. H.
Would be H.
And I'm sorry, Councilman Musa seconded?
Yes.
That would be H. Of your own favor? And then if there's another-
And then also, I want to add a closed session.
Regarding Gordon versus Hamtramck.
City business.
Second.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, we want to vote on the amended agenda.
Your motion? Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No, sir.
All right. All right. Now, we move to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to read the emailed or delivered public comments first. First one is from Mr. Garrett and family. "I hope that we can work together as one, be more for the city and the people. Let's do the right thing." This is from Nicholas, from Hamtramck Council and especially mayor. "Since two members of the council are under investigation and have been arraigned in the 31st District Court, I would like to request that they are put on leave. This is fitting because you have set precedent in putting Max Garberino on leave because you claim he is under investigation. You now need to honor your precedent and relieve them of their duties until this is resolved. If other members of the council are also under investigation, they need to be put on leave as well." Please, if you guys can stay quiet in the audience. Thank you so much. This is from Hisham Arobi. "I have been a resident of Hamtramck for 23 years, and I also work in our city, work here in our city. I have never been arrested or convicted of any crime, and I live right outside of City Hall in the police station. Unfortunately, this is now the second or third time I've experienced poor judgment by our police officers, but what happened this past Friday night was by far the worst. Around 10:40 PM, I was walking home after I was working on a flat tire when an officer stopped me with, 'What are you doing?'" He didn't even identify himself. I explained I lived there, and it was my car, yet he kept demanding my name without cause. With no report of any crime, the situation escalated. The officer drew his taser, and within moments, I was surrounded by three officers. Thank God this happened right outside my home, where everything was captured on video. The footage clearly shows my cooperation, my repeated explanation, and the officer's unnecessary and dangerous escalation. I will take every action necessary to protect myself and my rights. The sad truth is that there are officers in Hamtramck who lack respect for residents, lack the experience in professionalism, the job demands, and have lost the trust of the very people that they are supposed to serve. Too often, some use their position as a way to exert power over residents rather than protect them. And I have asked, where are all these officers when White Star Club have visitors are leaving at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, loudly yelling down the street, disturbing the peace, and sometimes breaking into fights right outside the park? Not a single officer is present then. Yet I can be surrounded by three officers, included one sergeant for standing outside my own home with a flat tire. No resident, especially one who has lived and worked in the city for decades, should have to fear being harassed, threatened, surrounded by officers, or having a weapon drawn on them without cause. We should be able to trust those sworn to protect us, not feel endangered by them." Thank you to city clerk for reading my comment, Hisham. This is Badrul Chowdhury. Dear city clerk, I respectfully submit this letter to formally request the inclusion of a proposed resolution on the agenda for the upcoming Hamtramck City Council. The resolution proposed to discontinue the automatic mailing of absentee ballots to all registered voters in the city of Hamtramck. It aims to enhance election integrity and reduce the potential for absentee ballot fraud by limiting absentee ballot distribution only to voters who submit a formal request and clarify that they qualify due to a medical emergency, a physical disability, verified travel outside of the city on Election Day, or a senior citizen 65 or older. This measure seeks to ensure the responsible use of absentee ballots and restore confidence in our local electoral process. A copy of the proposed resolution is enclosed for your review and preparation for the meeting. I kindly request that this item be placed on the agenda for the next regular city council meeting and that the necessary steps are taken to notify council members and allow for public discussion. Please confirm receipt of this request and advise if any additional documentation or procedures are required. Thank you for your time and service to the city of Hamtramck. Sincerely, Badrul Chowdhury. This is from Mohammed Al-Jahim. "Good evening, city clerk, mayor, council members, and fellow residents. I want to address two important matters today. First, regarding the recent city election, it has come to light that some members of the Hamtramck City Council were charged and found guilty of election interference and fraud. The situation has understandably shaken public trust. It's crucial for the city's leadership to restore transparency and integrity in future elections. We need clear steps to prevent any manipulation or misconduct so residents can feel confident that their voices truly count. Second, I'd like to highlight the resolution proposed by council member Salah Al-Gahim concerning the, I don't know what this is referring to. I'm just reading what he wrote. The proposed resolution by councilman member Salah Al-Gahim concerning the renaming of, I don't remember which one." of, I don't remember which one, but it was a street. This initiative reflects a positive step towards recognizing the community's diversity and history. Supporting such resolutions helps strengthen our city's identity and inclusiveness. Last but not least, I would like to thank the city for their hard work and dedication, and I'd love to leave...I would love to see if Hamtramck can fix our soccer field and Veterans Park with new paint and boards. Thank you." That's all for delivered and emailed public comments. We're gonna start with, uh, in-person public comments with Abraham Al-Jahim. Three minutes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. I respectfully request the status of the Hamtramck Review newspaper. What's that?
Go ahead.
The Hamtramck Review newspaper relationship with former city manager Max Garberino. The newspaper has received thousands of dollars from Max since he's been here, and the documents are available and should be public information. This new newspaper has a history...a history of attacking our mayor, city council, and anyone who criticizes Max and his business partner like Dave Adenchamp. The Hamtramck Review acts like the spokesman for the Hamtramck. They do not speak for all of Hamtramck. Recently, the newspaper wrote that the FBI is looking into matters involving investigations. That is not true. It's all a lie. The FBI does not investigate causes based on fake allegations and lies. Max has been spreading lies to hide dirty...his dirty games from all of you. I said it last time, and I'll say it today. This is not an investigation. It's a defamation, an attack on the Muslim community and its leaders. It's sad to know that we have councilmen that care more about their position than standing with justice and their community. Max created problems and called for investigations on everyone of you, so you can keep...so he can keep his job and continue...continue playing his dirty and corrupt games. We need a peaceful Hamtramck that works together, not against each other. The end of former city manager Max is a great new beginning for all of Hamtramck, and there are a lot of good and educated people in our city. Point number two, what is Max's relationship with Monroe prosecutor Jeffrey Gorki? Point number three, we would like to ask and do a FOIA request for calls and text messages between Max, the county clerk, and Andy, the deputy chief, because there's a lot going on. Now, the former mayor said there's a decade of absentee ballot corruption. This has been happening since 1996. Why is it a decade, our honorable mayor? And thank you for your service, Karen Mioski. You're a good friend, but I'm gonna stop here and say, you did the same thing. Everyone did absentee ballots. Why a decade? Because the Muslim majority took over in 2015? Is that what you call it? A decade? Shame on everyone that speaks like that. I would like to know, who was the elected official that invited Max to the festival last weekend? Who was the second for him to go onstage and speak? Shame on you, whoever invited him. And I would love to find out, Councilor Mahid, if you invited Max to come to the festival in Hamtramck, and he's not even the city manager right now. You disrespecting the community, whether it's Muslim, or Christian, or Jewish. Or Jewish. Thank you.
That's what you did when I invited him.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Tom Habed?
Good evening, council. I'm Tom Habed, Hamtramck Parks Conservancy. Uh, this is just an announcement for those who haven't heard about stepped-up enforcement around littering that's gonna be taking place at Veterans Park starting next week. Uh, so this is in response to a problem that's been going on for a long time. It's gotten a little bit worse. Uh, the city's been picking up hundreds of pieces of litter on a daily basis, so it's been draining the city of resources. Uh, the response to this is not in isolation, so we heard from the city interns, the Parks Conservancy's been working with them on some educational pieces. We place signs in the park. Uh, so we want folks to be aware. I know the police don't want to come out and, um, uh, issue citations that are rather punitive. Uh, the fines are significant, um, but we feel that it's a necessary step, and, um, the Conservancy's been working with the police and a number of city departments to make that decision. Uh, so we hope that by getting education out there about what is taking place, we'll be able to get in front of that, and tickets won't have to be issued. Um, but this is something that will be beginning, uh, next week with plainclothes officers, so folks won't even see them, uh, in the park, uh, but we want everybody to be able to place all their litter in receptacles. We're making sure that they're all, uh, clean, empty enough, uh, to support everyone's needs in the park. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Bun Blazi?
Hello, mayor and council. Um, first of all, I want to extend my congratulations to the summer youth interns and the GM student corps. Um, I know most of them have left, but, um, my message to them is that their experience this summer is, um, full of great and valuable opportunities to gain new skills that will stay with them, um, whatever direction their lives take them, and I hope they really lean into that, um, foundation that they're building. Uh, I also wanted to extend an early congratulations to Nick and his appointment to the DDA. Um, he is a really valuable resource to our community, and I look forward to seeing, um, his contributions influence the DDA and what they're able to do, especially as they're moving towards the Main Street Initiative. Relating to, um, Resolution 2025-95, um, if I'm understanding correctly, uh, the site plan for a 760 Joseph Campo is the lot next to Sheba, and if approved, that development will completely cover and erase the Yemeni mural that the community has worked so hard to preserve over the years. It's my...I was part of that project from 2019, um, through COVID, and, um, it was my understanding that there were agreements made with the city to preserve that and switch ownership to different properties, so I'm really confused about this. I hope that some of that comes up in the discussion about it. Um, but I really...and also, as vice chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, I think we really need to preserve our public art, and we need to celebrate the arts of our city and come together to protect those cultural icons that we've invested so much in, um, and make sure that, you know, that's a beautiful symbol of our city, and it'd be a shame to have it covered, um, in the name of development. And then finally, Resolution 25...2025-96 through 99, um, you know that I support Veterans Park as a valuable asset to the community, and I support all of those resolutions of development. Um, I think that the work that we're pouring into Veterans Park is really, uh, a signal to the rest of the community what Hamtramck is really all about. If you go to Veterans Park at any given day and time, that's where we see people from all backgrounds, all ages, all demographics, coming together, enjoying space together, and it's really a iconic, you know, symbol of what we are and what we can be as a community together, and that's all for now. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. I would like to raise attention to the, um, Family Fund Fair that's taking place tomorrow through the, um, Hamtramck Public Schools. During my campaign at the Housing Commission, I've come to know the residents, and what they expressed to me, I'm very disappointed that the city council and the city has basically forgotten about those residents. They are our neighbors, and they're also residents of the city. They had no idea about this backpack event or this, um, back-to-school event. Some of them only have one car. They're unable to come to the park with their children, yet there is a park in the back of the Housing, um, Commission that could host an event. So why can't the city and the Hamtramck Public Schools do another event for these kids? There are 300 families that live in the housing housing. Just because it's low income housing, it doesn't mean that they're any less than you and I. They're people, and they are our neighbors, and they are residents. And just because they live what's called the projects, it doesn't matter. They should be included in the city. So I hope with the new council for the year 2026 that we don't forget about those residents and those neighbors and involve them in our community. I would love to see another event for those children, because they deserve it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Meyer?
Hello, Bill Meyer, uh, the new Hamtramck Housing Commissioner. Thank you very much. Uh, so we're in the news again. You think that Hamtramck is full of crooks and, uh, that we're falling apart. That's what the media makes us look like. Uh, we just saw a beautiful, diverse group of young people, uh, present a wonderful program. You heard about the litter camp, we had many other things. Uh, will the media cover these, uh, highlights of one of the coolest cities in the country? This city is so cool, and nobody outside of here will know it if the media keep writing what they do, not covering only the negatives though. Are they gonna contribute to the switch on against, uh, a few leaders? This is a few leaders. This city has 28,000 people. All the rest of us have no problems, as far as I know. We have mostly white-owned media writing negatively about a mostly non-white city. Mostly white critics attacking mostly non-white targets. They mostly interview white officials from the past who have history of problems themselves and complain about the non-white leaders. You should have been at some of the meetings in the past. I've been here for 25 years, attending meetings more than anybody, and I can tell you, it's been way worse than it ever was today. So, um, I mean, there are people standing up, council members threatening each other, throwing garbage cans. It's horrible. We've had some bad times. But the city goes on, and I think we have one most sane, level-headed leadership. Uh, I'm very proud of the mayor of the city, because if anybody reads anything good about this city, you heard what he said when they were...when he was being challenged about these problems. He said that, uh, he's fighting for truth and justice and fairness for everybody, and that's the bottom line. These people are innocent until proven guilty in this country, as far as I know. Let's not attack anyone until we have the facts, and that's where our mayor's at, and that's where we all should be at. Let's try to find a way to work together. So, um, I also mentioned, I'm also concerned, is the media interested, uh, or concerned about the possible loss of one of the country's greatest murals, certainly the city's mural, uh, the Arab mural of Joseph Campo is possibly being threatened to be covered up. Um, it's a delicate issue that we have to resolve, and you'll see how our leaders work together to find a solution, and that's how we're gonna do it. We're gonna work together and to the benefit of everyone, and we'll talk about that later in the meeting, and I thank you very much for your time on it. I don't even need three seconds.
Thank you, Bill. Take care. Uh, Jalissa Smith? Is that correct? Is there a Jalissa Smith outside in the hallway?
She's in the hallway. Hello. How are you? My name is Jalissa Smith. Um, I am the owner of the fashion station, T. D. S. and San Joseph Campo. I'm here regarding the Hamtramck Festival things upcoming, and everyone gets excited about that. Um, unfortunately, most times I'm sad when it comes around. I'm here to request that my building not be blocked. I always want to participate. I've been a business owner in Hamtramck, um, for about five years now, and I've been here since I was a little girl, so, you know, I always look forward to participating, especially as a business owner. We cannot, and my business is community-driven, so everything in my store is sold by someone local, Hamtramck residents. You know what I mean? And so we want to be able to participate, but we're blocked, so we're requesting that the trailers that are placed in front of our business to be moved down a block where there are no businesses. So our entire block of businesses are not able to participate every year in the fair. And there was one year that it was moved down, and it was amazing, and I'm just requesting that that, uh, be moved down so that we're able to participate, uh, as our business owners in Hamtramck. We really appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Master Hussain?
Salawat alaykum. Fatahl Daudir, amal ibn Ayri, nima al-Joseph Campo. Ho adfaqkan, nubisgi islamii, tu agil laur muddik shiin salam, daasas, nubba ma, tu qan hamtramik, laqdak bil mayr, bayamul wak mark. Laka min akta bil mayr, laqyir dham, alban meshur wa alban yubba. Alashan ha kada, nubisgi itnaza, anha mub'afan, ya'fah zubayri. Albatta, mishmin zubayri, zubayri wa shayib, alban madu liyayuhu, ba'ud ishku lahaqab. Laka, albatta, nubisur, nubliq temek, tali dahliq, alqab nubisgi, laqdak. Regarding the building, um, being built with Joseph Campos, a clarification, it was leased to the mosque for 20 years, but because, uh, of the lack of support, Brother Bil Mayr gave up on the project in the park. Therefore, the mosque give back to Ali Azwari. It's not, uh, his fault, but he fulfilled his part to the bargain. He signed the lease and everything, but because the project fell through, the mosque give it back to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Master Hussain. That's all for public comments. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you, everyone, and, uh, we move to the consent agenda, and that's approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have A, approval of minutes from the August 1st, 2025 regular city council meeting; B, approval of invoice register date ending August 12, 2025; C, approval...we approve extension date ending August 12, 2025; E, Resolution 2025-92, approving 2343 railing neighborhood enterprise zone application for submission to tax...to state tax commission; E, Resolution 2020...2025-93, approving 2249 railing neighborhood enterprise zone application for submission to state tax commission; F, Resolution 2025-100, approving appointment to board and commission.
Motion?
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
No objection?
No.
All right. Thank you. And we move to the new business. We have the first one, Resolution 2025-94, approving moving from BS and A NET system to cloud-based system for city of Hamtramck.
Motion?
Second. Uh, would the FTC manager explain that, please?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, we have Brandon here, uh, who's our IT head. He's going to do a short presentation on, uh, this topic. Uh, this is basically, uh, we use BS and A in all our departments for processing any transactions and anything. Uh, BS and A dot net system is a 17, 18-year-old system, which is being phased out by BS and A, uh, and they're moving to a cloud-based system. Uh, cloud-based system has, uh, a lot of advantages in terms of, uh, a lot of resources that the city currently maintains, uh, its own servers and its own, uh, security and everything that we would not need to do anymore in the future once we move to this system. Uh, secondly, a lot of, uh, cities are moving, uh, gradually, uh, to this system. Uh, if we get the approval today, uh, there's a long queue of communities, uh, which are up for implementation, so our turn will come sometime next year, uh, you know, second half of next year. So it's...it's a move that we will have to do eventually. Uh, what we have been able to do is we have secured, uh, a grant from the state, uh, for part of the, uh, conversion. Uh, they will cover, uh, around eighty-two thousand dollars worth of, uh, implementation cost. Uh, so, you know, that will reduce the overall total cost. Uh, so the net cost for the city is going to be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So now I'll ask Brandon to... So we had a little slideshow prepared for this, if... I could pull that up really quick here.
Just bear with me one moment. We're having technical issues, so just bear with me.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. I'll keep this really short and sweet. I'm not gonna bore you with all the techno babble. I'll just hit the nice bullet points for you. So as Amir said, our city operations depend on BS A. Every department in the city uses it, uh, from income tax to building, code, everybody. It's a very important software suite that we use. The current system that we're on right now is called the dot net infrastructure. That's aging, and it's no longer supported. They are phasing that out. Support for that is officially ending next year. Uh, with that being said, uh, those outdated servers, there's also a very high risk of failure or downtime, and as it stands right now, updates are usually manually applied by me when they fail.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll keep this really short and sweet. I'm not going to bore you with all the techno babble. I'll just hit the nice bullet points for you. So, as Amir said, our city operations depend on BSNA. Every department in the city uses it, from income tax to building, code, everybody. It's a very important software suite that we use. The current system that we're on right now is called the .net infrastructure. That's aging, and it's no longer supported. They are phasing that out. Support for that is officially ending next year. With that being said, those outdated servers, there's also a very high risk of failure or downtime. And as it stands right now, updates are usually manually applied by me when they fail on my background back end. It puts a lot of strain on IT resources. We also have no built-in disaster recovery for that, except for another backup service that we use on site. The system honestly, it's running on borrowed time.
Brandon, can you talk into the mic since there's still some background noise?
Sure. So, delaying this migration, it's really, it's creating some risk, and it is going to cost us money. Amir was able to find an $83,000 grant that we can apply towards this, which will be a massive help. It also is going to put us more in line with better cybersecurity and compliance. In the near future, as we move forward, most cities are, actually, all cities are going to be following what's called the SGA standards. These are security guidelines and frameworks set down from the FBI. As of now, it's voluntary, and in the near future, it could be mandatory. I would like to see us ahead of the ball, and I would like to see us get compliance sooner rather than later. It's really in the city's best interest. So, since all these platforms are being integrated, the .net platform, quite frankly, we're not really willing to have a choice. I would like to see us make the switch now while they're not so endangered with role over migrations, as opposed to waiting till the zero hour possibly happen to make this choice out of disaster. The timeline for this is August of this year. We can sign the contract, and we can begin moving towards the officiation of the process. From September to October of next year, we can begin the data migration. And that is also going to have the training of our staff. The portal will be launched. And after that happens, we're going to have support every step of the way. We'll have training for every department. It's not going to be too big of a change in the interface. We'll stay relatively the same. We will have an assigned project manager for BSNA on-site the entire time, and it will help assist with any issues. We don't expect any disruptions. It should stay fully operational, and it's going to be a controlled and guided migration, and there's going to be a clear end date. So, usually when we do this, there's no delays. City operations are made. I can honestly skip a lot of that. Did you guys have any questions for me? I wanted to have your answer.
Yeah, just a quick question. It's good to upgrade and, you know, but I'm just a little concerned about this annual fee of $92,700. What is the cost difference between the old system and this? How much are we spending now using this current system compared to this new one that we'll be spending $92,000 a year?
Sure.
As a fee?
So, really, the biggest benefit, let me touch on the benefit first. The biggest benefit with the cloud base is going to be the security, the redundancy, as well as the fact that we don't have to host these servers on-site anymore. We don't have to maintain those servers. That is a significant strain on our technical infrastructure here. So, as it stands right now, that cloud annual subscription of $92,765, that is going to cover basically everything. That's going to be for backups, for disaster recovery. That's going to be everything off-site, so that hardware, that network is going to be maintained somewhere else. And that is going to be right in line with the security standards and compliances, and it's going to be a lot easier for us. So, it is more expensive, I suppose, now, but there is a large benefit in that.
Just to answer your question, currently, we are paying around $30,000 to $40,000 a year on annual fee, just the annual fee. In addition to that, you know, we have to spend money on maintaining our system, our set of servers there. We have to upgrade those servers. That costs a lot of money. These servers last a few years, and then we have to move on to the next set of servers. So, all of that gets eliminated. So, the cost is higher compared to the existing system, but the other costs that we will not need to do in-house will offset a lot of the costs that we have to pay right now.
Our current server is actually...
The actual, we were able to negotiate even this cost. This cost originally was, in their original proposal, was, you know, I think $130,000 or $20,000, something like that. We were able to negotiate that down to $92,000. And they gave us a discount, a one-time discount if we decide on this soon, because otherwise, they said that they have a lot of communities who are applying for this, and they cannot, you know, get any details in this feature.
The $92,000 you risk contention has a second contract this August. Our current server is in life. And if we can keep it going, but if we don't make this move, we will have to replace that server. And the challenge in that is because the .net will no longer be supported by this time next year around fall time, we're not going to have an option. We'll have to make a choice out of disaster and possibly move to a different platform, which will involve a massive migration and a lot of complications involved with that as well.
One more question. You get the grant from $82,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
How much is the cost?
Sorry?
How much is the cost?
$231. $231? So, the net cost for the city is, the net cost for the city is $150,000, which will come part of the jump fund.
Then you have $150,000 a year.
Every year, $150,000?
Yeah.
How much are you paying it?
That's what I said. You're paying $35,000, around $35,000 right now.
Around $60,000.
Right. But that $60,000 is offset by all the security that we have to do ourselves, the servers that we have to, you know, we have to maintain a lot of machines in-house to run this system, which we will no longer have to do. So, there's a lot of money involved in running those machines and updating those machines. Like Brandon said, those machines are old. They need to be replaced. So, this is the best time to move in that direction, because next year, if this system is not available, and we buy those new machines, they'll just go waste. So, that is why what I'm trying to do is trying to do it at the right time where we don't have to spend any money on the old system, and we move on to the new system, which we will have to do not to date tomorrow.
And the cost of the current systems, it goes beyond just the cost...
And that cost is going to grow up. So, we've been able to, you know, source some, some state grant, and we've been able to negotiate down some of the annual costs. So, that's the advantage.
So, the cost of those machines, it goes beyond just the cost of the hardware itself. There is also the security factor that goes with that as well. The backup skill is one of the key redundant backup that's extremely important. So, just having that on-premise hardware goes beyond the initial cost. You have to factor in several other variations of cost along with that to keep an on-premise system going. So, the higher cost of the cloud, the majority of that is really, we don't have to worry about that, as that's part of the subscription, that's part of that operation.
Well, the first question is, what, Valerie, your presentation of training has a different price than what we have here on our system?
It was actually not the right slideshow. That was supposed to be, that was...
And then, I noticed here travel expenses. We have $30,000 for travel. What was that for?
Sorry, where did you see travel expenses?
The, I'll, I'll, I'll explain that. The travel expenses is part of their proposal in case they have to travel from, you know, from their offices to come here and, you know, train our people or do some of this conversion. So, they put in an approximate number, which if they don't incur, then we don't have to pay.
You're providing us something that we're going to book now in this total amount?
Right.
So, if you're telling me this is so-called estimated, they don't know if they're going to travel or not, how you want me to approve something that's estimated if they will come here or not to train?
So, that's why I'm asking for an approval for the project with $149,835,000, that, you know, if we incur less, we will, you know, we will pay less. And if we have to incur more, which I'm not anticipating, we will have to come to you again. So, this $149 is based on an estimate of a number of hours that they will need to train our people.
And then also, you have $80,000 just to train people.
Right.
Those training days could go down. They charge us those training days. There's a very good chance, and I have pretty, pretty high faith that our staff here won't use every single one of those a lot of training days, which essentially bring those costs down.
So, how many, how many people are they going to train that will cost that much?
The whole, everybody in the city hall has to get trained.
So, why not train some, train him? Who does the technology?
No, because not everybody uses the same system. Some assessing people in assessors' office use a separate system. People in treasury use a separate system. Accounts payable use a separate system. You know, income tax, a separate system. So, there are multiple system that are being used in the city to run the city. So, you can't train one person, who will then train everybody. So, each and everybody who uses that system will get, will get the necessary training.
Well, now, now there's different system, but you mentioned only one system. Now, Walmart has a different system.
Of course.
They all, they refer to them as modules. So, every department, they want a different module. So, the assessing module operate much differently.
So, where on this company come from, and they're going to train you?
BSNA, they're located in your mission, headquarters.
So, isn't it cheaper for you and maybe cheaper for our heads to go there and get training?
Basically, in the travel cost, they will be charging us for their mileage and, you know, any, any incidentals. So, training over here is always better because then you have people who have been using this in a live environment of all the, you know, necessary issues that they face on a daily basis.
And I don't want to blur the lines between training and travel. A lot where you see the training, the travel expenses, some of that travel is going to be mandatory. A lot of the migration, as well as the implementation, is going to have to take place on-site. A lot of it will be configured remotely on the back end after the fact, sure. But the initial, the initial install is going to be in place on-site, and we, they will have to travel for that.
Is this a lifetime contract or what? I mean...
It's not a lifetime contract.
It's an ongoing, I mean, this is, this is the system that runs the city.
I know, but I'm saying, paying this amount, what in the future we want to change?
We have that option. We could always...
We can always change. We can always discontinue.
I have other options as well, and most of the other software offers are more expensive.
This...
Because we are given lots of options.
Since we had the tax for Highland Park, I mean, are they going to contribute, anything?
Well, the tax is just one portion of this whole big, you know, system. And, and we do have a contract with Highland Park for a certain amount of, you know, for the services that we do. We do have a plan to go and talk to Highland Park in increasing the, because our costs are going up. We do have a plan to talk to Highland Park, their city manager, in discussing increased costs for providing the services that we provide to them.
Can I add something? You're aware that the city hall all uses BSNA currently, and we each have our own module that talks to each department. So, we are currently in BSNA.
Without BSNA, we won't be able to...
Yeah. That's what we use for all of our, all of our inputting and exporting and communicating between departments currently.
Every department uses it. There isn't a single department in the city hall that doesn't rely on the software. Basically, if I could put it bluntly, if the software fail, the city will not operate. If we have an issue where the server, the hardware goes down, we're obviously going to lose until that's backed up. Whereas the cloud is going to alleviate any possibility of that happening. It's going to be safer, it's going to be more secure, it's going to be faster, it's going to be more uptime, and all in all, it's, we don't really have a choice. If we don't move to it, then the antiquated, our current system completely deprecated, no support whatsoever. We don't have any software going in our city.
So, that's a good question. Do you research any other companies that are available to provide the same service with cheaper rate or...? No, they are not, unavailable. They'll be more expensive because they will have a higher implementation cost. Right now, all the data from so many years has been sitting in BSNA. That whole data would need to get migrated to a new system. That alone would cost several times more than what this cost would be.
I did look at several software companies that offer similar suites to what we use, and the cost was significantly more just for the bare-bones software. Once you factor in the migration of all the data, as Amir mentioned, it was about quadruple the price. We are offered legacy pricing through BSNA, as we have been a long-time customer.
Mr. Chair? Yes. So, in the new system, like, does the user have to pay to the company information, like, the current one is free?
Sorry?
Even the, for example, if a resident want to check something on BSNA, would they have to pay any fee, like in neutral, in the new system, they have to pay? But now in Hamtramck, they all don't use free.
The user can go on the net and access anywhere. So, they, they will not need to pay anything. The system that they use is a net-based system, which is not linked to the BSNA that he uses.
So, it doesn't affect users?
Right.
Right. Does it affect the...
I think a lot of even businesses are upgrading the consumer system. At the clinic, we had a crash in the old system. We lost a lot of data, so we, we brought some similar clouds and system that, you know, it's more secure and it's safe and...
It ensures availability of the system. It takes out the headache for individual companies or communities to maintain a set of hardware, because it's expensive to maintain the hardware. You have these huge big companies like the AWS, Amazon Web Service, is providing hardware cloud system to hundreds and thousands of companies all around the world. So, even BSNA is probably using somebody else to host the whole system. BSNA itself is not using that. So, this is the way the world is moving, too. And that's why we have almost a year-long wait to migrate to this new system.
I would actually like to touch...
The more we delay this, the higher the cost.
BSNA's Network Operations Center actually is the one. They encrypt everything end-to-end, touching back on security and bringing something to those federal compliance standards. Everything through that cloud system, in case there was any issue of security, it is encrypted end-to-end, and that Network Operations Center is BSNA's, and it is a secure facility. And it does create, it's compliant with basically every standard that's out there.
Mr. Chair? I did work in the building department, so I know the system's kind of old. And like Kalan said, you know, it's old, it's been using this entire city. I don't have no issue upgrading the system. To me, just the training, the cost of the training, the cost of the travel, that just adds to it. So, don't worry about the $83,000 that we has got. We're looking at a total amount of $231,000.
Sure. And that initial cost is painful.
Yeah. You know, so, and then...
So, that's why, you know, the implementation cost, we've tried to cover it through the grant. The other question is that all the travel costs, the training costs, is dependent on how much we use. So, we're not going to pay them more than what we use. So, what I'm asking for permission right now is this amount, and most likely, we will come under that.
How much longer?
I can't estimate that. If I could, I would have put that number, because, you know, we don't know how many hours or days of training we would require, how many people would, BSNA will have to come on-site.
All right. I guess we can call it and call it on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-94 approved.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next one is resolution 2025-94A, approving first reading and second reading of public hearing date for proposed amendment to parking provision in C2 and CBD district.
Motion?
Second.
Good evening, Council. Today's agenda item will be going over to hold our first reading at Saturday for our second reading and public hearing for the proposed amendment change to our parking provision ordinances within the central business district and mixed commercial use districts within the city. After deliberations with the planning commission, community economic development, and our building official, John DeAngelis, this ordinance change would allow for more non-city-owned parking lots within the C2 and CBD parcels, and would allow for administrative approval of non-conforming parking lot setbacks in these districts with good reason, subject to the zoning and building officials respectively. CD would like to note that this would also allow property owners that would construct new parking lots adjacent to existing businesses would give them the opportunity to lease these parking spots to local businesses, which could just have an overall good, like, win-win for both business owner and parking lot owner. And CD would recommend that Council adopt this change to both districts, as recommended by all the commission, CD, and building officials. If you take a look at the proposed amendments, there are red lines, which would allow for special land use approval and accessory uses within these two districts to allow for parking lots. And in addition... And in addition, amendments are sectioned saying parking lot shall be permitted in the area of maximum of thirty feet off the rear lot line and behind the main building unless otherwise approved for good reason by zoning official and building official. Do I hear any questions?
No question?
The last time, last minute for that.
Pardon?
Last minute for this issue. You get time limit?
For the second reading, it has to be done by the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
Ready? Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202594A approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2025-95, approving site plan for Eight Seven Six Zero Justo Campo.
Motion. Second.
All right, we have to discuss this with Bill at the Lefizabel and then I would, I would like to ask a few people to come and talk about this. People who were part of this in the past, including Bill Meyer, Ali, who's the owner of Yemen Cafe, and also, if possible, he was.
So you would like to suspend the rules and allow them to speak on this topic during the discussion?
Yes.
I do also have a question. Would Bill Meyer be able to play a four minute video during this presentation if that's okay with you? Are they allowed to play audio during like a public comment?
It's not a public comment.
Okay.
They're being included in the presentation. Just need a motion and a second.
Do you want to email it or you sent it to me already, right?
No, motion, suspend the rule, all second.
Motion.
Okay.
You got a second?
Who motioned, who seconded?
Councilman Hafez motioned.
Thank you.
And I think Councilman Flail seconded.
I motion.
Oh, opposite.
Oh, okay.
Page? Yes, thank you. So, CED is here because we conducted the site plan review of the plans for the proposed building at the vacant lot at Eight Seven Six Zero Justo Campo. This is a spot we're all familiar with, given the mural and Chiva and Yemen Cafe and right next to Veterans Park. The purpose of our site plan review was to look at the proposed building itself and we assess whether or not the plans meet the ordinance requirements. We went back and forth on a couple small details with the owner and were able to recommend that the plans themselves are approved, which I understand is a separate issue, kind of want to draw a line in the sand for us there that, you know, our staff report definitely has a purpose. You talked about the plans itself and as part of that, of course, we took a look at the agreement which the city of Hamtramck also signed regarding the mural. But for us, we've been trying to handle them, as related but distinct issues. So the proposed building, you can see on page two of the staff report that's been included with this business item. It's a single story building with stucco and stone and brick or block stone. And we have no concerns with it regarding the city ordinances for building materials. And the property also received the applicable facade review and approval for that at the Planning Commission meeting earlier this month. I will start just giving my comments from CED's perspective after looking at the agreement. As I said, this was a agreement between Ali, the owner, the Islamic Center of Michigan group that was leasing the vacant lot for a time. And also, as a part of this, Bill Meyer and the city sold a couple parcels on Goodson, not this parcel that we're talking about, to Ali, who was planning on building a structure. And that structure was not built and the Islamic Center chose not, chose to end the lease for the property that was facilitating the preservation of the mural. The city's only part of that agreement was essentially agreeing to sell one of the properties on Goodson to Ali. And so, given essentially that the part of this agreement that was keeping the lot leased, because that was no longer there, we do believe that the owner has the right to build it, but we are very interested in helping the community and owner and everyone involved, you know, come to a solution that we could have the art preserved and maybe recreated. So that is what I'll say in terms of a facilitating capacity. And folks, of course, have more knowledge about it intimately with me. So here to be helpful and also to again draw that line in the sand, I guess.
Any questions? No?
I guess we're going to hear from.
No, I'm sorry. Do you want to hear from the rest of the speaker?
I think we should start with the owner because that is a part of the site plan agenda item.
Okay.
Hi. I'm Mark Decker, this time Ali and I as attorney. I got a market, I'm also very, are the owners of the property. I've been representing them for a number of years and I was involved in the transaction back in twenty twenty one, I think it was, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, two, between Mr. Meyer, the city, and the Islamic Center. There was never an agreement to keep the mural there forever. There was an agreement that the property would be leased to the Islamic Center, I believe for ten years. And their obligations under the lease were to pay the property taxes and to maintain the property. Last year, the Islamic Center approached my clients and said, we don't really want to keep those obligations anymore, we want to terminate the lease. And we agreed to that request from the Islamic Center, signed an agreement to terminate the lease. We notified the city and Mr. Meyer in July of twenty twenty four or so, more than a year ago. There was no objection at that time. And we're sensitive to the fact that the mural is there and our clients are prepared to talk about participating in putting a replacement mural of some kind, either on the exterior of the new building or perhaps on the other side by their restaurant, Yemen Cafe. But we don't think that there is any restriction on their development of the property at this point. We never agreed with the city that the property would never be developed. The only agreement with the city was that we would enter into a lease with the Islamic Center, which did occur and they, the Islamic Center complied with the lease for three years and then decided that they did not want it anymore. So this, this building is going to be a positive addition to downtown, generate tax revenue. And I don't want this to be perceived as a threat, but, you know, there's also potential liability for the city if they don't allow development. So, you know, my clients are, are willing to, either on one side, so they own the Yemen Cafe, they own the new building and they're looking to, to put some sort of mural on one of those two surfaces. But they would like to proceed with development and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
So you're willing to rebuild the mural and then rebuild it in a while? Yeah, the wall is okay. We like the community chair, we get a help. So you're saying you're helping them but not completely? We're going to help.
Consider if there's agreements involved and whatnot, I would need some time to review them. If you guys table this maybe to the next meeting and I can review everything. But at this point, there's, it sounds like there's agreements that I haven't seen yet. There's offers to redo the mural that are not set in stone. I'd rather take a look at this if you.
Councilman Smiley, would you like to say something?
Yes. I have no problem with Islamic Center and the owner. I guess have, I need just give me a little bit of time, like two week. I have couple point. I got to discuss with Bill Meyer and our friend. After two week, maybe we're going to come back to the city. And it just give me like two weeks. I have couple point and make discuss with Bill Meyer and our.
Okay.
Do you still want the rest to speak on this or do you want to table it and wait until next meeting to discuss it all?
I would like to hear from Bill Meyer.
Okay.
Yeah, we look to hear.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut off Bill Meyer or anything. I just was saying, it sounds like I'll need time to actually review this. That's, that's all I'm.
Mr. Bill?
Contract.
I'm on the stage.
Thank you for letting me speak about this very important project. One Hamtramck was organized back around two thousand six and this was one of our first projects and certainly our first mural in the city. And we did this to bring the community together. This is why we want to do an art piece. We wanted to help draw attention to that part of the city that had been neglected for so long. Part of the city that had the majority of public ethnicity in the city was not represented accurately, so we wanted to draw attention and bring business there and we want to help business and the people there. So that was our intent and we went out within the Yemen community and raised funds and found an artist, found a location and decided what the content would be in the mural. So it was all from the Yemen community helped us do this. We made some mistakes along the way and one of them was that we chose a wall that had a parking lot in front of it owned by someone else who someday we didn't know who might want to build there. And he has every right to do that. And when we heard he was going to do this, but I think it was about eight years ago, we created a save the mural committee to try to save this mural and help Ali to maybe find another alternative what to do. So that's why this big major master contract came up. Took five years of negotiation with mediators and lawyers to draw this up so everyone will be happy. He got two lots in the back to build on, which ended up being bigger space than the one lot that he let us lease to save for twenty years, by the way, it wasn't ten years, it was twenty years with Islamic Center. And also we had to change the street, had to two way so that you could build back behind the alley and use that space. We even gave him ideas of what to build there, a strip mall with parking in front, a two or three story place, apartments above, it could be a magnificent thing, it would be not be blocked by anything in the park because the park is going to be flat. So that was the plan. It was very complicated, we spent many years trying to solve this with the help of many people, it's not just me. I was happened to be the chair of the One Hamtramck at the time. ACC was one of the founders of this thing. Ahmed Al Amari was the councilman who helped to start this. Many people were involved and the community was very supportive. And I can't tell you how many people were touched and moved by this project and benefited. I would hate to see it go down. There's a, sorry, excuse me. There's some solutions to this that I wanted to offer and you mentioned one here, but you got to keep in mind, this is a work of art that's become world famous now. This is by an artist, Dasi Fernandez, which is world famous. You just don't take like a Van Gogh painting and say, let's move it over here or something like that or, or you don't ask the artist to repaint this again or something like that. That doesn't happen, that's not the way it works. So if you're going to cover it up, we have to find another solution. One, I came up with three possibilities. One was to create a vinyl mural, a vinyl banner that we could create almost the same size, maybe half the size, and put it on some other wall, maybe even twice, we could do it twice or whatever, in other parts of the city. That's one possibility. Obviously, the mural will be gone, but the image itself would be saved. Second option was to go back to the original final master agreement. I mean, we're on these lines this and find another person, another organization to lease the lot. This, this lease was broken without my knowledge. The Islamic Center went to them and canceled the lease. Not, and I wasn't told after that. And I probably wasn't upset because One Hamtramck fell apart at that time, we had it dissolve. Had personal issues going on in our family and One Hamtramck fell apart and then, and no one wanted to, Islamic Center didn't want to keep this responsibility up. It's a lot of responsibility. You have to come up with a plan, we want to build a park there, we had many meetings with committees to plan the park there, but the committee, that committee just to build a park fell apart also. So we had nothing else, no other options and we went back to him. But if he's, if we could find someone, other organization that would be willing to lease this and if he'd be willing to go back to the original agreement that he agreed to once before. And he did agree to build in the back lot, I don't know why he didn't build in the back lot, but he didn't. Now he wants to build in the front lot. I've gotten to, I've always liked these two guys and I never wanted to be on the, on the bad side of them because we did this to help them and to help their business, not knowing this was going to happen. So we have to find an equitable solution to this. Al Samir is the guy who's the first buddy that we got, he gave us his wall to build the mural on, it was his building. And he helped us all the way through this process and I know he hates to see the mural go too. We all do. This is world class, it's a simple hamtramck now. We can't lose its image. So if we have to do that, we could do that. What was the third option? I don't know. Thank you. Whatever else you want.
Third option was to, I think you wrote to, for the city council to reject that and then.
Oh, that was a third one, yes. That was a third option was just to reject the plan and then you can build it and ruin the mural. But that would cause possible losses and it would cause divisions. We don't want to make enemies doing this. This project was done to bring the community together, so let's find a way to solve it so we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any now, so would you like that, anything?
Yes. The Islamic Center settled into the agreement on the basis that One Hamtramck will turn the place into a park and we pay the taxes, we maintain it for two, three years. And Bill Meyer announced that he dissolved One Hamtramck and the park will not be built. So it didn't make sense that we just maintain a empty lot for twenty years. And I told Bill Meyer that we will be, just continue to lease, but probably forgot. So it's not the fault of the Islamic Center maintaining for two years, pay the taxes and everything, but once the park isn't going to be built, it didn't make sense to just pay money towards the slot. Yeah, there's another solution. You could, on that side, you could build a brick wall, you could build steel and aluminum glass, glass with aluminum beams and people could still, they come to his building, they could still see the mural. I think it's hard to do.
It's going to be inside the business, it's not.
It will attract customers to you. This mural is worth a lot of money. If you maintain it, if you maintains it, I'll take it, give it for him.
Well, the thing is, I just want to mention that Ali, he, he told me that he is ready to contribute to, to make the banner that Bill Meyer suggested.
A banner won't last long. A year or two will be gone.
Is it, it can last between ten and twenty years.
A banner? Something, just slash it and that's it's gone.
Or you keep the, you just keep printing more, I guess.
I think if they're going to be, this can't become sorry.
Or another solution is just raise. How much did it cost? Twenty three thousand bill?
The original?
Yeah.
It was about seventeen.
We fundraised and we painted in us, so we approved his plan on the condition that a new mural will be built on his new building, same design.
Same art.
You don't pay it.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have a problem if they're going to use that.
Not be a solution.
Mr. Chair, it seems like there was, you know, agreements with the, with the owner, with Bill and then the Islamic Center and Hamtramck. So, and it seems like the city had involved somehow. And our, our current city attorney does not know what was the city involved in that, in the lot. I know you own it, you have a right to do whatever you want to own that lot. If we ask you kindly, so our city attorney could go back on these contracts, you see, what, what the city had to do with it? If you give us time, this is, we're asking you permission, it's, it's all your fault. You want it to happen or not?
We extended a whole other plan.
I also have already spoken with your attorney, speak to him again, he's got a great reputation and in the meantime, I would speak to him.
Okay.
Twenty six.
Twenty six?
I'd like to, I'd like to answer that point about the city involvement in this project. Originally, it was not. Originally, it was not meant to be a city project at all. We were hopefully doing with One-Hand Traffic.
But because the city was involved.
But then the city got involved.
And because the city got involved, our city attorney does not know what the hell's the contract.
I haven't seen the contract after you.
I'm asking, I'm requesting the owner, if possible. And that goes back to him if he wants to give us that time or not. If you could give our city attorney to go over with his attorney with those contract, so-called whether the city got involved. And that, you know, that goes back to him if he wants to give us the time or not, it's called.
It's okay, for 26, we can move it for 26. But what I'm thinking, I don't need like last time unless, not a lot, unless money for same, same, same blame or same game. Because I'm mad about the mirror over there. I like that once the, I do whatever I can before, I'm was before. Almost spent nine thousand dollars for the art project. They do everything for me, it's ready before 2018. When they speak, I'm sorry. Okay. I don't know what the English is, it's not gonna help me. Okay. Okay. Okay.
So they came to them in 2018 and they offered that, that they wanna keep this project for the community and how important it is. And they accepted that, but they said that they want to do a park and all that stuff. Or something, this continued that. There's like no purpose of keeping it empty. So they came to a conclusion that, you know, that if this is gonna cause corruption and like, you know, everybody's gonna be mad at each other. That they'll agree and they'll sign a lease and that they offered us the back two lots. But they didn't offer us the back two lots free from the city. We bought it with money. So they priced it for their value and we bought it. And also buying it, they never said that, oh, you have to build in the back or, oh, we're gonna do this. So it's like a completely separate thing. And what we're trying to get to the point is, is that, like, what's stopping from, like, we're willing to offer and willing to like move the mural. We're willing to help. So what's stopping us from building? What's like the legal, like, what's going on?
All right. I think, I think the idea is clear. Councilman Samir would like to ask for some time to discuss with Bill Meyer, not anybody else. He just wanna discuss with Bill Meyer.
The city council here is, is committed to take action in the next meeting. It can't be different. So in the next meeting, on the 26th, we will have to take action. We'll give them time. You know, we asked kindly for permission from you and you agreed. So on the 26th.
Can we motion?
Yeah, we're gonna have to table this on the 26th.
I gotta vote.
Okay.
Go back to the session.
We did vote to suspend the rules.
Right.
What are we, what is that?
We don't, we just have to go back to the session. We suspend the rule.
No, no, no.
You're good. Now both of them table it.
Yeah, that's it. You just table it and we vote. Yep. I needed a second.
I'll second. And then I need.
All in favor for tabling the resolution? Okay, Mr. Mayor, resolution.
By the 26th, we will vote on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. The next one, resolution 2025-96. Approving bidding of the 2025 Veteran Park Tennis Court renovation. One-Hand Park Conservancy funded.
Motion. Second.
All right. Any presentation on this or just?
Yeah, Tom is gonna be presenting.
Yeah, so the next project that the Parks Conservancy would like to undertake is some improvements to the tennis courts at Veterans Park. Currently, there are three courts that are operational, but they're not in very good shape. We'd like to bring those back to having six courts and that supports the growing tennis program in the city. First time in a number of years, we have a high school varsity, a girls' tennis team and a boys' tennis team. So this will be a partnership with the city, like many projects that we've been doing. Where it's funded by a combination of Parks Conservancy funds and other grants. We have several of those already committed. And the city will manage the project with support from the Parks Conservancy and continue to own the assets. I think this will be a really sharp addition to the center of Veterans Park.
Seems like it costs 66, 500,000?
That is the proposed contribution from the Parks Conservancy. We will be receiving bids that will give us a better indication of the total project cost. It will certainly be higher than that. But we have to, we'll have to make some decisions about the overall.
All right. Any questions?
Most.
All right. Last one on that, please.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Sedman.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-96 approved.
Thank you. Another Veteran Park project, resolution 2025-97. Approving award of the 2025 Veteran Park parking lots and access road. Medical grant, engineering construction to Metropolitan Concrete.
Motion. Second.
Any, go now. Give us some information on that too? Because again, you're in good.
Good evening. So we went out to bid for the Veterans Park parking lots and access roads, so the two parking lots there. We had seven bidders. So the low bidder was Metropolitan Concrete at 1,859,440 and fifty cents. Just to give you kind of a brief update or explanation, because we do have that agenda item two down. So the limits of construction, that's in black, so the two parking lots, the access road. And that essentially the 400 feet of Dan Street that's in front of the parking lot. Is what's included in this bid. So total with. So total with the 10% contingency is for a total construction cost of 2,45,384 and 55 cents. So this is coming from the grant that we received for 2 million dollars. So right now we'll have essentially. I put everything together with engineering costs and everything. Essentially, the overage of 322,734 and 20 cents will come out of Act 51. To give, because of the Dan Street portion. So, but this includes new storm sewer, so new piping, getting the system out there. Honestly, we can't even figure it out. So this is tearing that out, putting in new piping, storm drains, inlet patch basins, manholes. So we know where everything's going and there's no mystery out there anymore.
So it's gonna be enclosed from Joseph Campo down Street all the way down to the back lot?
Is it gonna be?
Close from, no. From the last house?
I don't know.
Down. From the last, from the. And even from the alley.
Did you see the map?
Yeah, hold on.
Hold on.
So essentially where this portion, the portion highlighted in red is coming into the next, into more agendas. So, yeah, so that's what we're approving for the 2, 2,45, 45,300.
I have 100 feet. Why didn't you put 100 feet?
The first 300 feet is coming. It was one of those where my engineer's estimate was at 2.1 million. We had a 2 million dollar grant.
They're gonna show us better.
So it was trying to.
Besides, we give this as budget.
It was trying to make sure we had enough funds.
And other side, we budget.
No, no, no. It's gonna all be in good shape. Give me two more agenda items and we're gonna be in good shape.
Okay. All right. So what's the timeline?
So they're to have construction completed by November 30th. So I, I have spoken with this contractor multiple times to make sure that we can have this all completed this year. And that's what's in our contract. That's what we're sticking to.
You, you understand.
I understand.
All right.
Ready? Councilman, Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Sedman.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-97 approved. The second part to that resolution is for Hennessy's.
Yeah, the next one, resolution 2025-98. Approving award of the 2025 Veteran Park parking lots and access road. Medical grant, engineering construction management to Hennessy engineers.
Motion. Second.
Just as follow-up, can we just go ahead and vote on this one?
Yeah.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Sedman.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-98 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2025-99. Approving award of the 2025 Veteran Park parking lots and access road. Additional scope construction to Metropolitan Concrete.
Motion. Second.
So this goes on to that, if you wanna bring that PDF up again, sorry. No, the picture.
Oh, the picture that was emailed?
Yeah. No, no, no. What you just had out, the same one you just had out, that PDF.
I see. Just one moment. Just the map, right?
Yeah, just the map. On the side.
For what?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
There you go. That one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So again, because pricing came in so well, and obviously we wanna do all of Dan Street. We talked to the contractor, holding pricing, also having completed by November 30th. So we understand this is a tight timeframe to add on that first 300 feet of Dan Street. So that's including sidewalk road on both sides.
And that goes up to Joseph Campo.
Yes.
And that will be concrete, correct?
Yes, this is all concrete. So it's gonna look sharp. So curb, yeah, curb and gutter all around everything, so around all the parking lots. Yeah, I think you guys are gonna be really happy.
Yeah, this whole area will just be grand view.
Yeah.
I guess we have to, after it's done, we have to go out ribbon carpet. It's gonna be picture for that park.
It is, we have a lot of stuff going on in this park area. Obviously, the good to know just on, this going on, future DPS building.
New ribbon carpet.
Absolutely.
For that park.
All right. We can do that with the.
It's not that easy. Somebody, they follow me, someone hard. Later, he's good.
All right. So thank you so much. Maybe you can vote on this one here.
Councilman Sedman.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Al Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-99 approved.
Thank you. The next added resolution page is discussion about Joseph Campo projects, sewer project and alleys.
Okay, so this is where I want, if you can read the picture.
Motion. Second.
All right. So just, we wanna hear from a few guys about development.
So Joseph Campo, obviously, we understand there's been a little bit of a pause there. The reason being is there's a 14-foot diameter junction chamber. So this is an updated picture as of 30 this afternoon on what's going on out there. So the 14-foot diameter junction chamber, getting that approved and then getting that pre-casted. So they cast the sections of the structure in different, in different heights, so they can bring it out to the site. So currently, the contractor remobilized last Thursday. They've started digging and exposing. As you can see, this is the egg-shaped sewer.
Sorry, you sent it in an email and not an attachment. And I don't know what's on the left side of my email and I don't want it to be all over this TV.
Okay.
So just bear with me, I apologize.
Well, here, I can do this.
Yeah.
This is a bus one across the Shabbat Center?
This is, yes, across in front of. So this is just to give you guys an idea of what's going on. So that's the 1920-ish, I'd say egg brick sewer. So getting that uncovered, it's an intricate process. You couldn't just start digging. We, it's, it takes a little bit of time to sit there and dig and get down to that. Now what they have to do.
That's brick.
That's all brick.
Yeah, that's the problem.
It's very.
It's like a Lego sewer system.
There's little bits of leaks that are coming out of it right now. So it's being held up very steadily. So there's, there's. There's an ID.
Both of our sewers.
An ID going across the road right now with straps to hold this sewer in place. So we can get in, so what they have to do is they have to dig underneath it. They're gonna sit there and put in a concrete base, about 24 inches thick, concrete base, 14-foot diameter wide. To place that structure on top of it. So that's gonna go over this sewer. And eventually, that sewer is gonna get notched out. So it can then spill out into that structure and into another sewer and down the sewer that was installed in the road. Obviously, the sewer, putting the sewer in the road is not, you know, that, it's not a, it's timely of a process. Obviously, there's time. But the sewer is 17 feet deep too. So all of this, we're still on time. In fact, we're probably, I don't like saying we're ahead of time, because I don't wanna sit there and give you guys high hopes on something getting done early, just in case. But we are definitely ahead of schedule. So we're not, nothing's been delayed on the schedule, even with that little bit of pause in the, in the, waiting for the structure to be delivered. So the structure should be on site here soon. But we gotta get this little bit, it's intricate doing all this.
So is it only that piece or is it the whole? Oh, that's all.
The whole system is like that. So it's an H.
Is it only that in Joseph Campo with the entire city?
No, you can, there's an upper and a lower. So this is the upper egg. There's another lower egg. So this is like an egg-shaped sewer. And it's, there's brick. So this was like true craftsmanship back in the early 1900s. And it's double-layered brick, from what I'm being told. So I've been excited to get out and actually see this, because you don't see this. Even the foreman that's out there told me, he's been doing this for 25 years and he hasn't seen this.
I had Omar put a picture of this.
I see it. And that's why I want you to see it.
Yeah.
They did over there, like Goodson and Joseph Campo. And Enders and Joseph Campo. And he would, in favor, but favor and he would, it's one.
Yes.
But after we done, that's not gonna be used anymore.
No, no, no. That's your main trunk line to get that down to Denton, that then goes down Denton Street and that sewer to the Conant Mount Elliott.
Yes, but you said it's leaky.
You got, no, everything's gonna be, it's gonna, things are gonna be, there's gonna be concrete underneath it to hold it up. It's gonna, there's, it's, there's a process. It's a delicate process, is the best way I can say it, for construction.
Make you a bit of calcium, so you can.
Honestly, I heard you guys, I heard you guys to go out there, obviously, don't go inside the construction zone or in the construction area. Stay on the sidewalk, you know, and go see it. Because it's not something that we open up very often. It's not something we see every day. So it is, it's, it's a piece of history. It really is. So now, once they get done with Joseph Campo, we gotta do this thing on Lumpkin. Lumpkin, we're, we have to cast in place a 10-foot by 20-foot, 10-foot by 20-foot structure. Lumpkin, we have to cast in place a 10-foot by 20-foot, 10-foot by 20-foot structure. So again, we're gonna be opening up, and we gotta see what that sewer's like too.
Lumpkin, Joseph Campo?
Lumpkin.
That's part of the whole relief system.
That's why from, yeah, that's why from the alley to Lumpkin hasn't been completed yet. So that's the update on Joseph Campo. Update on the alleys?
Nine alleys.
Nine alleys. They started this Saturday, and I'll be honest, they had any equipment there on Saturday. So they weren't out there yesterday, they were back out there today breaking up the asphalt, and so they could start removing that. I know Charles from our office was marking out limits and everything too. So it's moving forward. So they have started it.
They started where?
They started in between Jacob and Goodson. No, no, Roosevelt. Goodson and Roosevelt.
And Roosevelt being there.
Yes, yes.
And the last week, they say we're gonna start Monday.
No, 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 no. We said, we said the 12th, or we said the 11th, and we actually, they came out on Saturday.
Yesterday.
Yeah, they came out on Saturday.
They didn't do anything.
They started breaking up asphalt, because I looked at it first thing Monday morning.
If we're open to those nine hours before the American.
We have talked, we have spoken with the contractor, and they, no.
Yeah.
We're still within timeframe and within that contract. So parking lot behind us, as you can hear, they were saw-cutting pavement. So they're gonna have a pumper truck out here tomorrow, is what I've been told, to pour, place more concrete.
Two more days of pouring.
Um, what else? Super Construction is back out on site doing let service lines on Hanley.
It's getting down, they make confused for the whole of the lot.
So what is the survey done? Has he been?
I don't, I don't have that.
I talked to them this morning. They have two days of pouring, then another week of curing. After that, after that, they will, you know, do temporary lines so that we can start parking there, and then later on, once the parking structures comes in, then we have a small break and then.
They're gonna start for this project September 1st.
All right, well, thank you. So hopefully, we can get it done while I'm still here. But you just mentioned Super Construction?
Yes, sir.
We still have a contract with them?
We have a new contract that they started on. They finished up St. Avin, then I had them jump out of the city for a little bit, just because of that congestion over there, Joseph Campo. They were ready to get back in. Obviously, we still have congestion there. I wanted them to get back in because we have the school on Hanley, I wanted Hanley completed before school starts. So we're juggling a lot of.
Did we ever suspended our contracts with them?
No, we've completed all of our contracts with them.
So that means Max Laiting, he said we suspended our contracts with them.
We pulled, what we did pull, we did pull an award away from them.
One time, one time, they dig the hole in Danforth in the sidewalk next to a resident's house, and then for a whole year, that residence kept coming to the city to ask them to fix the hole, because they kept it open. And Max kept telling me that we are not responsible, this is the resident, he did it, he has to fix it himself. And then luckily, his wife reported when the trucks were there digging, and it has super on it, on the trucks. When the wife provided the video for us, Max admitted that it was our fault, and he told me he will suspend any contract, super. Now, nothing was done.
When I was gone, John is correct, I forgot about that. The super was a little bitter on a project, and they didn't get it, they gave it to the next who was bitter.
Yeah, but we agreed that time, that since they did that mistake, and actually, one of the residents fell in that hole at night, and it was a liability for the city, he could have sued the city, but because he's related to that residence, he didn't. And then we agreed that we end our contracts with this company, but anyways, let them finish the work and we'll talk about it. But this is something that I just found out tonight.
This foreman that they had running that previous project is not out on site, that owner of Super Construction is actually the main person running the contract, this contract. So I think we'll definitely see some improvements in.
Those already been improved.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anything else? No, we done with the new business, so thank you. I think we move to the reports, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take any more of your time, guys, we're not gonna talk about anything. Yeah, so I just wanna take the opportunity and congratulate all the winners in the primary election, and wish a good luck for the ones who didn't make it, and we hope to continue working with them, you know, to serve the city. We are in need for everyone who, you know, and we appreciate everyone who presented themselves or herself to serve the community. It's very hard to find people to volunteer for the city and to even run for a public office, since it's almost volunteer position, so we appreciate everyone. And it's very hard to find, you know, good people, highly dedicated, highly committed people to run for public offices, so we really appreciate everyone, and we would like to continue working with everyone who was involved in the primary election, and I wish everyone the best. And we want to continue to work as a community, unity should be a priority for all of us. I think we should stop all this divisive politics that's going on in the city and, you know, predetermined targeting of each other, so, including the media that we talked about in the beginning of the meeting, you know, it should be a unified, unifying voice for the whole community, not just for one side of the community, and constantly targeting, you know, one, another side. So we appreciate everyone who showed up tonight, and we wish you all the best, and I'm very happy to see such a very important projects, you know, being done for the city. You know, it will definitely change the face of the city and how it looks, that's important developments that we are seeing, and I hope to be present when we finish this project. I mean, I'm not rushing to, so I wanna stay here, serve the community, and it was an honor to serve for the past three years and a half, and I'm here to be part of our mission to finish any, or to take care of any unfinished business for the city until then. So thank you so much, and that was just my report. Mr. Mayor, Portem, if you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna thank everybody who came here tonight. God bless you and be safe.
All right, any city council member would like to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I thank you, the community, whoever showed up for the election day. Thank you, your voice is heard, and your voice is, is come out the right candidate for future election and can serve the community. And thank you, the police department, City of Antrami, to have the Bala Mala was done in Joseph Campo. There was, you know, last meet, items came out, and the city was participated very well, you know, get it done peacefully. I know there is some misconduct from the few police officers, few upstairs residents, and I think police keep aware of it and you will take appropriate action. And, you know, police is our, should be a neighbor friend in a small community, they all need to behave their best attitude to the public. Earlier, we got a public comment that someone was misbehaving or not treating well for this person when his car was broken down and he was fixing it. So those attitudes need to be gained, and we all need to have professional attitude to the public. And thank you, everyone else, for everything that happening. It's booming, we have a lot of construction going on. And one thing I do wanna echo Diane, that's very true, we need to include people that are not in the other side of the city, which is, they are saying, they're constantly blaming, you know, they don't feel their kids, they don't feel secure, they don't have enough police patrol in there, and all this, any kinds of function we do, we should include that, we cannot exclude everybody. We cannot say, oh, we're gonna build a community with all inclusive and then exclude somebody, you're not giving enough opportunity to be a part of it. So we need to pay focus on this. I request, Mr., in terms, you may have to please, you know, pay attention to this. And thank you, everyone, for participating in the meeting today. Have a great night.
Thank you. I would like also to address this point. I mean, we are not neglecting or ignoring those people. In the planning commission meeting, the last one, or the one before the last one, we invited them, we sent flyers to them to join the meeting, because we were discussing changing the zoning of that area from residential to, to commercial, and then they came, a good number of them came and voiced their concern, they didn't want to change it to commercial. Although there are some positive stuff to, you know, build some clinics or pharmacies there, or businesses to be nearby, so they don't have to travel all the way to the city. But it's kind of a sensitive topic for them, so they rejected that. They said, we still remember the housing lawsuit, so we don't want this to be a beginning of another issue, so we listened to them and we voted against changing the zoning of that area, and we kept it as they like. Also, the housing commission, which we have one member, two members here, Austin, Belmeyer, and Taha Farah, they are also responsible for a lot of projects for the housing, for the, you know, there's the city plaza or the housing community, and they are doing a good job, I've been following with them on a lot of issues, so. But thank you for reminding us, they are a very essential component of our Antrami, you know, community, and we should encourage more community engagements from that part of the city.
Mr. Mayor, can I give another 10 seconds, please? I know Diane came out and say I invaded, or, you know, I don't wanna say I actually still in other investigation, city manager, but it has nothing to do with me. I am not the organizing committee or anything else. So I don't have any authority to invite anyone. You know, it's a public function, everybody showed up, he did show up and he did his speech, this between him and the committee, it had nothing to do with me, I, you know, I just don't condemn this, this is not, I have nothing to do with, and he was there.
I'll point it to him. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, my honor. Thank you, everyone, who came here to spend a very good time and listen to us. I'd like to say thanks to everyone who showed up last Tuesday's election and put your support, especially monitoring, talking about the project area. I was visiting a couple times before the election, I saw some issues there, especially water fountain, kids playing around, and only one water fountain is not working at all. I asking the kids and people, they're badly demanding, if you can fix this, improve this water fountain, and place it. There were some issues going on there, drug, all other stuff could be, we need to get more people around this area. We are same community, but look like the way they talks and look like I feel it, they are a little bit behind than us, behind the other side. So we like to get together and put all, all Antrami together. We do love much better, but we have room for the improvement, we can improve their life also. And a lot of kids, they are not too much playing ground in this area. If we could do some more accommodation for the basketball and all other stuff, they may, some of the resorts to kids are playing there, but I suggest our park conservation committee or some other committees who can visit there and see what can we do improve for the, this area.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Any more reports, Mr. Mayor? Just the council.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. One thing I do add for our project area, like I will request our nonprofit organization and other board commissions, we give it a, of course, it turns if we can to, so that that will help the residents or the kids who live over there, to, and, and congratulations to the winners who made to the payment, good drive to the fire.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we come to the end of the report section, and we move back to the second round of public comments.
Lynn Lazi? Two minutes.
Hello again, mayor and council. I just wanna circle back to the conversation about the mural at, on the side of Shiva, and hearing that the original mural only costs $17,000, I need to put on record that my, I work for the College for Creative Studies, I'm the vice chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. I just quoted a client a similar-sized mural, $125,000. The cost of inflation to get that caliber of mural, that size of mural, is gonna be a significant price difference with inflation, the cost of, you know, labor supplies, all of that, so I need, I just wanted to put that on the record, that $17,000 for a mural that, like, that is a steal. And then also, while reproducing the mural in vinyl is a nice thought, that mural means, is bigger than that. The significance of the mural, it's a landmark, there have been cases where murals of that caliber have been legally protected as landmarks. I know that has been part of the conversations, I'm not gonna, you know, interfere in how that, those negotiations go, but that could be a path chosen to protect the mural, and there are legal precedents to do that. So I am available as a mural expert. The Arts and Culture Commission is responsible to help protect and elevate public art in the city. We're willing to participate in the discussions if invited to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belmeyer?
Yeah, go ahead, take that away. Because I'm gonna complain about three things. Yes, well, we got that mural for $17,000 because the artist only charged 13, wait, $13,000. He's a friend of ours, he came and did this from Chile, flew up and do this for the lowest price possible, because he wanted to do it for the community. He's an activist, activists charge less. So anyways, great work on our sewers, I mean, this is a great advancement, it's more good news about Antrami. So where's the media?
We just kicked them out of here.
Oh, okay.
Soon you came on, didn't you?
God, just in time. All right, well, why did it take so long to get this done? I mean, this has been a problem for like 30 years, did it have to, do you have to wait for this council mayor to get this done? Thank you very much for finishing the job that should have been done a long time ago. So hopefully, at the next meeting, I can show a little video that I wanna show you about the following, the creation of the mural and the importance of it. Also, I wanna mention, the sound is very bad in this room still, we tried to resolve it, but this mic, what's coming out here does not go back there into those speakers.
Your mic is off. The mic is off.
Even if it's on, it doesn't go back there. This, oh, that's good. You can hear it, someone's speaking at the podium, but this room does not, this half does not hear unless they get, unless you talk real close like it. So we gotta fix that. Also, we gotta replace this podium with some clear stand or something so that we can see you guys, and I'd more like to help out with this for no cost. I have a music stand you could use here in place of this big clunker, and that would be much better. But anyways, you need a compressor too, so that you keep the volume level, so when someone person talks low and another person talks loud, it's all even, so you don't have to, simple compressor, like maybe 20-oh. Okay. Anyways, you might not have noticed, at the last council meeting, we witnessed an attempted political coup in this room. It was an undemocratic, unprofessional, selfish move to replace the legally appointed city mayor, Portem, from his position. When it became obvious to this councilman who tried to do this, that he wouldn't get the votes.
Do you want your extra minute, Mr. Mayor? Do you mind?
Now, when he couldn't get the votes he needed to pass a resolution to make him the mayor, Portem, he walked out of the meeting and prevented the city from carrying on its business. This is disgraceful behavior, and he owes an apology to our appointed mayor, Portem, and to the people in this city who did not get their work done because council meeting didn't have a quorum, so we got no work done at the last meeting. That was intent, it was intentionally done that way for personal gain. And let's stop this sort of personal self-interest stuff and work with each other and not try to wipe each other out of positions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Mohammed Adan? Two minutes.
Thank you so much. I was hoping to get the first comment. When I walked in, the young lady was speaking, so I'm gonna need a minute or two, extra time, please. I stand before this community and with deeper frustration, and this is an attack on just the community here in the city. One or two elected officials does not represent 30,000 citizens. And among all, I know that we have ups and downs, we are learning language issue, we have Mohammed Kabulasun serving long time, Sedman is the youngest one. So I see from my own point of view, like, it's a good attack, like, from the top to the bottom, and then they will come. Two, two last meetings, like, quite two months ago, I was saying that something's coming, you be careful. I would say keep up the good work, there are a lot room for development, improvement, whether we make a mistake, go public, and we apologize, and we take it as a standing that you wanna serve, you serve whatever come in your way, try to serve with pride and dignity. The reason I'm here, not for myself, for the community, a friend of mine, I was involved in, informed, he's a business owner, his car get broke down, he is standing on the sidewalk, and he was fixing his car, the police, the cop, jumped out of the car, police car, and tried to chase him, likewise. And this type of behavior, I know that. And this type of behavior, I know that earlier, a young lady was speaking, and I heard that, you know, I was outside, sitting there. During this Mela, it's a great community event we had. Hamtramck is a beautiful city, wonderful city, we have lot of loving memories, and we are proud for our city. But what happened?
One minute extra.
What happened to the city, that what we are facing, the police officers, they're treating the community and citizen as criminals, it's, it's a blunt. And they're treating everybody like it's a war. And I have seen and witnessed, my own experience, that during this Mela, we hired Hamtramck some police officers, the reservists, $35 per hour to save, and bring some peace, and do some crowd control, not to bring them and invite them to make more chaos, and act out of professionalism, and due to their, you know, rookie, or new, or whatever it is the reason, they went too far. Hundreds of the community members been assaulted by them physically. I understand that it was a great gathering, 5,000 to 20,000 people showed up, it's a great event. But hey, we were not there to fight, and nor we should be treated as our community should be treated as a criminal.
Thank you.
So I ask the city to please address these that they are training.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you so much, everyone. Uh, we're gonna have a closed session for Zelba, and then we'll come back, but we are not voting on anything. So.
I need a motion?
Motion?
Second.
And the line is?
Line 23.
Thank you, guys.